Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Commissioner Birkey and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Harvey. If you please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we're so thankful for you, Lord, tonight, your goodness to us. Thank you, Father, for the place that you've given us to live in the community. Thank you, Father, for blessing this place and for seeing it to this point. I pray, Lord, now that we would have your wisdom tonight as we look through the things that we have decisions to make. I know, Lord, that all good things, all perfect things, come from above, and I pray, Lord, that this would be a good meeting. We thank you for a good city. And I just pray that we'd work together with the citizens and the leadership of this community to make it better than it is now. In these things, I pray, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
If you place your right hand over your heart, please, and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Larry Birkey.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Wash Maui.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Jacob's absent.
Yes, Commissioner.
We have a call.
All right, thank you. First item of business, public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each if you're an early speaker. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludick?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Therefore, any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given the opportunity to address the commission at the time that item is discussed by the commission. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the council chambers and here at the front next to Mr. Adams. Individual speakers would be limited to three minutes each. First item is our consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of February 16, 2010. May I have a motion, please?
I move approval of the regular meeting of the Lancaster Planning Commission, February 16, 2010.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion? Please vote. Next item is our new public hearings. The first item is conditional use permit number 0717. The request was to construct a 69,270 square foot shopping center within the drive with a drive-through restaurant in the CPD zone. Could we have a staff report, please?
Chairman Vos, members of the Planning Commission, this is an application that was filed with us in 2007. During a good part of 2008, we were in some dialogue with the applicant, taking the project through a development review committee meeting and providing them back corrections that were necessary in order for the project to proceed forward. Beginning in the fall of 2008, the applicant failed to make any more progress on this project. We have contacted them at various times. They have, at times, indicated to us a desire to continue. However, there has been no forward progress on either the plan or the corrections that we have put forward to the applicant. As we've discussed previously, the state law in California does require that development applications be acted on in a timely manner, and there are some potential consequences if that does not occur. In looking at this particular situation, certainly now we are two and a half years past the time of the filing for this application. It is very likely that at least some of the studies that were submitted as a part of that are no longer valid. To proceed forward with it would obviously require a re-review of that information if, in fact, the applicant was willing to carry that forward. What we have recommended to you in order that we don't run into a problem with the permit streamlining acts requirements is contained in state law, that you deny this application without prejudice, basically indicating that we are not making a decision on the merits of the case but simply acting on it in order to stay in line with what our requirements are, and without prejudice, therefore allowing the applicant at the time that they feel there is a viable project on the site to refile. And that is important because, under normal circumstances, someone who has denied a CUP cannot refile that application for at least one year. If, for some reason, within the year they were able to see some potential for the project, they would have the opportunity, under our recommendation, to refile that.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? So, without objection, the public hearing is open, and do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
I don't believe I have any speaker's cards for this item, Mr. Chairman, but you might want to poll the audience.
Want to just? No?
Yes, we do have one speaker.
Okay.
Sandra Canata or Canada?
Ms. Canada?
Good evening and welcome. Good evening, thank you. Just wanted to ask a couple of questions, but I think most of them have been answered. If I'm to understand that this conditional use permit is being denied right now, or are they intending to proceed with building something there? I live in the neighborhood.
The recommendation is, from staff to the commission, is to deny the project without prejudice.
That they could come back at a later time and restart it.
Certainly could.
I had concerns about the traffic and the lighting. My house faces south towards that project. There are houses in front of me, the back of their houses are, you know, would be the back part of that project. So, we had some concerns about the lighting, the noise. When I first moved there, Walmart wasn't there, but since we've been there, they moved in, and we had concerns and problems with trash and traffic and different things like that. So, that was a concern for us, as to how the traffic would flow, the lighting, what times trucks would be able to come in and out and that kind of thing. And we get a lot of traffic from East Side High School coming down J now, and there's been a lot of construction on J and 20th Street East recently, and New Gen and all the streets there on that corner, and how this project would affect all of that, everything that's going on there on that corner right now, because there's not enough traffic lanes going northeast, south, or west to handle a lot of traffic that goes through there right now. So, that was our concern if this permit was allowed.
Just for your information, depending on, it depends on what the commission agrees to do tonight, but should they uphold the staff's recommendation, your comments would best be served at the time a new application is filed.
Right.
Whether this commission is here and remembers what you have to say, it's best to keep track of that. And typically, the project's notices are posted on the property as well as mailed to you. If you live right adjacent, you would receive mailing indicating a hearing, and just mainly for your information and anyone else, really. I don't know what the outcome of the vote will be, but we'll find out pretty soon.
All right then, thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman, on this item.
All right, then, without objection, it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on this matter.
I move the motion to adopt the resolution number 10-06, denying conditions used for my number 07-17.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion's denied.
Motion carries six zero. Project is denied without prejudice.
All right, thank you. Next item is a new public hearing on tentative parcel map 69578. This is a subdivision of four single-family lots in the SRR zone. We did not receive an uncontested letter on this matter, so I guess we need a staff report.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Vos and Commissioners, the applicant is requesting approval to subdivide a 2.55 gross acre site into four lots, which meet or exceed the minimum lot size of 20,000 net square feet. Access to lot number one and number two would be provided from Avenue L6, and access to lot numbers three and four would be provided from 37th Street West. The density of the development is consistent with the general plan designation of non-urban. The proposed subdivision meets the city's zoning requirements for the SRR zone. Access, utilities, and infrastructure exist or can be extended to serve the project. Therefore, staff is recommending that the commission approve tentative parcel map number 69578. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of staff? So then, without objection, the public hearing is open, and we would consider testimony, if we have any, on this matter. Applicant? Care to offer?
I have no, I have no cards, Mr. Chairman, but once again.
All right. No one wishes to speak on this matter, then? Seeing none, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 10-07, approving tentative parcel map number 69578.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item, item four, is a new public hearing on tentative tract map number 62759, general plan amendment 04-07, and zone change 04-08. The recommendation on this matter is to continue it, however, since this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing to hear testimony if there is any. And I'm not sure if members want to hear a staff report on this, it's a continued matter, so it'll come back to us next meeting, probably, right?
Yes, it will. And I have no cards on this one.
We have no cards, okay. So, the public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to comment on this one? Certainly can approach the podium. None? All right, then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I make a motion to continue general plan amendment 04-07, zone change 04-08, and tentative tract map number 62759 to the April 19, 2010 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Motion passes six zero, and we will place this item on the April 19 agenda.
All right, thank you. Do I have to renotice this, or is it a?
No, it's a continuation. Oh, we do have to renotice it? Oh, okay.
Yes. Sorry.
I guess we will renotice it.
Because it's a general plan amendment, is that why?
Because of a problem with the noticing.
Oh. So, it's on our agenda before it was properly noticed, so that's now we're going to, okay, never mind. I get confused, thank you. All right, the next item is tentative tract map number 62873. This is another denial of, recommended denial of an amendment to tract map number 62873. So, could we have a staff report on this, please?
Chairman Vos and Commissioners, on February 21, 2006, the Planning Commission originally approved tentative tract map 62873, and it included a condition to construct a right-turn lane on Avenue K, 47th Street West. Applicant has recently requested that the Planning Commission consider amending the approved tentative to remove the condition for a right-turn lane. Avenue K is identified in the city's transportation master plan as a primary arterial. Primary arterials are typically high-volume, high-speed roadways that are designed to accommodate mobility rather than access. Making right turns from a through lane on a high-volume, high-speed street such as Avenue K can present a potential safety hazard because vehicles slowing down to turn create a high-speed differential with the through traffic, and this can lead to an increase in rear-end collisions. Constructing a right-turn lane would provide a refuge for turning vehicles and allow them to decelerate safely. The capacity of the intersection would also be impacted. By adding a right-turn lane and removing the turning vehicles from the traveled lanes, additional through traffic could be accommodated in the intersection. As our volumes on streets increase, this capacity will become more critical. It's also important to note that this may be the only opportunity that the city has to obtain the right-of-way necessary to construct a right-turn lane. If we did not obtain it at this time and the project were allowed to develop as proposed, it would be nearly impossible to later go back and obtain that right-of-way. Avenue K and 7th Street East is also a quarter-mile intersection, and the reason that is important to the city is that is typically the spacing that we would consider a minimum for traffic signals. As, again, traffic were to increase on Avenue K, at some point, a signal may be warranted. It also would provide an opportunity for having a pedestrian crossing at that point. There are nearby schools that would provide a way for them to safely cross Avenue K. So, based on that information, the foregoing information, Public Works considers a right-turn lane necessary in order to provide safe refuge for turning vehicles, to maintain intersection capacity, and to provide for a future traffic signal and safe pedestrian crossing. Staff, therefore, does not support the applicant's request to remove condition number four. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Birkey. Any of the members have any questions? Mr. Birkey?
The only question I had is, I see the logic behind it. Are there any examples of intersections such as this where there was not a right turn?
There may very well be examples. I did not look into that. What I did look into, though, is how many intersections of that type during the year 2000 came before Planning Commission where we did actually require the same thing. And in my research, I was able to find 22 other tentative tract maps approved in 2006 with similar situations where we required a right-turn lane. In fact, on the same night that this project was approved, three other tracts were approved with similar conditions.
And so are you saying that you did not find any that had similar conditions where a right turn was not required?
I guess what I'm saying is I was looking for similar conditions where we did require it. I did not look necessarily for the opposite.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Anyone? Okay. Be appropriate to open the public hearing then, without objection, and consider testimony on this particular item, if there is any. Do we have an applicant who wishes to testify, or an applicant's representative?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Arsalan, I will really botch your last name if I try it.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Arsalan Hayat Wudi, and the owner of the corporation. Basically, the only reason that I have objection to this, I brought up this objection to this right-hand pocket condition is, first of all, there is a high-voltage power pole on that property that needs to be relocated as a result of this condition. And I asked Edison, and it's going to cost me around like almost $100,000 for just that pole. And given the market situation, at that time when I accepted the condition, I mean, the home prices around that area, they were going for between like $400,000 to $450,000. But right now, it's like around $180,000 to $190,000, and that's a big difference. So, basically, this project, at this given point in time, is not feasible for me to continue. And also, the second reason, I mean, I'm not borrowing any money from the banks, I'm bringing money from overseas. So, I mean, I'm bringing investments, obviously, as a result, I'm going to be creating jobs, city fees, permit fees, inspections, contractors, workers. So, I really would appreciate if you could work with me, or if you could come up with somehow to make this condition a little easier, because in my opinion, these are only like nine lots, and that's just too severe for me to continue on.
How many lots were in the original tract map approved?
Nine.
And you're asking, you're trying to expand it to 10 and using the fact that you have to relocate a power pole, which costs what it costs?
Yes.
Every other developer and every other piece of real estate that has power poles gets to move them too. You know that, don't you?
Yes. Well, at the same time, I mean, regarding your question regarding similar situations, I mean, if you look at 5th Street East, 6th Street East, and 8th Street East, none of those streets, they have a right-hand pocket. And actually, 8th Street East, there's a commercial property, it's a shopping center on the east side of it. So, and there is no right-hand pocket, and, you know, frankly, I mean...
Would you say those street names again, please? I didn't understand.
8th, 7th.
8th Street East?
Yes, 8th, 6th, and 5th. None of those streets, they have a right-hand pocket, and they're all adjacent to my property.
When were they approved?
Like 20 years ago, I think.
Pardon me?
In the 90s, like 20 years ago.
Therein lies the difference.
Yes, yes. So, I would appreciate if you could make this project feasible for me so I can continue on.
Very good, thank you. Do you have any questions of the applicant? Did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Abe Nijem.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Vas, Chairman, Mr. Member of the Planning Commissions, my name is Abe Nijem, and I'm representing the owner. And with your permission, I would like to present our case, and might need more than three minutes if possible, but I'll try to make at least than five if possible. First of all, that we're hoping that we get some kind of stimulus package to this project. So, as the owner mentioned, that he will be able to create some jobs. This project will provide the city with city fees and permit fees for more than $200,000 to $300,000. And at these days, I think that's valuable money to the city. As Mayor Rick Paris mentioned, that he would like to create more jobs and reduce city fees and so on, and that's a good opportunity for the people who lives here to enjoy some of that stimulus package that we're trying to get from the city. There were several tracts and CUPs that was approved within short, within the last two, three years. As a matter of fact, CUP 0706 and CUP 0803, which 0706 at 10th Street West at Avenue H, and 0803 at Avenue J and Jana. Those are commercial projects which generate much larger traffic impact on the adjacent property, more than this, and they were not requested to have right turn. We look at Avenue K and all the residential around the area, and we took pictures of the area to show you some of these developments, some of them actually at 6th Street East.
Did you provide this information to staff prior to the hearing so we could have an opportunity to look at it?
No, sir, I did not, but I would like to provide those.
Then I'd suggest you share that with us, but I'm inclined, then, to continue this matter till we can study it. If you're giving us information that we have not seen before and claiming development has taken place without right-of-way dedication or actual improvement in like projects, that's the case you're making, is it not?
That's right. Some of these cases like...
All right. I'm only one vote, but you can share that information with staff, and we'll see what the commission decides. But I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to clarify what you were talking about. Go ahead and complete your statement.
I would like to provide one of the corner, the southeast corner of 6th Street and Avenue K, that's a new shopping mall, and that is being approved within, as a matter of fact, still vacant, it's a new construction, and that does not have a right turn.
That's on the southeast corner.
Southeast corner, sir, Avenue K and 6th.
You're on the northeast corner.
We're in the northeast.
And the right turn would be on your property. The property you're discussing does not, it's not on the, it's not on the point of the intersection where a right turn would be necessary, it's on the other side of the intersection, it's on the east of the intersection. What you're suggesting, then, that that project should have had a right turn on someone else's land?
I think we should have had a right turn because it, that commercial side, it generates tons of traffic.
That's an interesting point of view.
And they did not have a right turn. And it's a commercial. Our project is not a commercial, and usually you do that wherever...
I guess you're not, I guess you're not following what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
The property you're describing is eastbound on Avenue K, and it's east of the intersection.
It's the northeast corner. Our property is...
No, no. The property you're claiming was, did not have the dedication, didn't have the right turn.
It's the southwest corner of 6th and Avenue K. 6th East and Avenue K, southeast corner.
Southeast corner. It's east of the intersection, it's not west of the intersection.
No, I'm sorry.
So, you're westbound, and you're on the east side of the intersection, which drives the decision.
Where our property...
That's what drives, that's what drove the decision that the city Public Works Department is recommending.
Right.
You're on the east side, east side of the intersection on a westbound traffic lane. That's what's driving the recommendation. What you're describing as not having a right turn is opposite of what you're doing, and there would be no, there would be no way to have, there'd be no purpose to have it.
I think if you drive in that area, sir, you will find out that people getting into the site, they have to come from Avenue K and get into the site, and they don't have that. I mean, people driving there, and this is very long commercial site, so...
Okay, but the argument is economics. That's really what your argument is.
Well, not only economics, sir, because as a matter of fact, and this is, it has to be, it has to be an essential nexus between the proposed development and legitimate city intersection, and legitimate city interest. And in this, by providing right turn. In our case, there is no essential nexus. What I mean basically is the exaction has to be proportionally related to the proposed development.
All right.
And we don't have that. I would like to bring to your attention that there's various cases in the state... I would like to bring to your attention that there's various cases in the state of California, such as court cases, Nolan versus the Costa Commissioner, and Dolan versus the City of Tigard. There was cases like that, and there was no essential nexus.
Sir, are you suggesting you may want to bring litigation against the city if we impose this condition?
No, not, sir, not at all. I'm just trying to find, to show you...
I just don't want to misunderstand what you're saying.
What I'm saying, that there is no essential nexus, and the city has to come up with some develop, with some requirement that's proportioned to our development. Our development generate, based on the Traffic Institute of Transportation Engineering, during peak hours, between the hours of four and six, it generate 1.1 per household, total of 10 cars, that's what we generate.
Okay.
And based on this...
When you acquired the property, you've been the owner of the property for a while?
No, sir, I'm the, I am the engineer.
You're the engineer?
I'm the engineer.
Were you the engineer when the track map was approved?
Yes, sir.
And it was approved with conditions, and your client accepted them?
We did not know at the time that it costs $100,000 for the...
We're going back to the economics again, the cost of an Edison power pole removal or relocation, right?
Well, it goes back to the, to this, and also the proportionality of the requirement by the city, that's what I'm saying. We're adding 10 extra cars to this track. 60, if we, if we consider the Department of Transportation with 10 extra cars, five in and five out, that's what we're generating, only five cars in and five out, that is based on these regulations.
But this information wasn't available when the track map was approved? Was not available when the track map was approved originally, when you were the engineer on it?
This information, there was always available, but at the time, we just looked the other way around, and to get the project approved, because the city say, if you don't, if you don't approve our requirements, then we're going to deny the project. And then we say, okay, we try to see what we can do. So when we have 10 cars...
It's an interesting comment. Maybe some other members may have a question or two for you.
Sure, sure. You know, when we have only five cars in and five out, that's, we're not generating, the next track, they have 140...
We're in the question and answer period, we'll get to ask the question, we'll let you answer. I think you've made your point regarding the traffic study that you are now reporting you had in 2000 and whatever it was, two?
Six.
Go ahead.
Well, I think my question, you're talking about the five cars in, five cars out, and that's currently, and I, you know, what was mentioned is future growth of the city, and I think my concern is the public safety. When you talked about the safety, you know, the through lane, and people having to brake to turn into there, as we grow, that traffic is just going to increase and increase and increase, and as we develop out there, it's not going to be five in and five out. So I think that's where my red flag is. Additionally, you know, you talked about providing jobs, and I think that's, you know, stimulating the economy is great, but I think over everything, my concern is the safety, and that's where my red flag goes up, is making sure that our citizens are safe, and they're able to travel without, you know, increased accidents on that.
Absolutely, I agree with you. I'm also concerned about the safety. My only concern, ma'am, when there is five in and five out, two of them go to the right, and three go to the, to the left. And five cars, three cars might go in, we're generating only two or three cars going to the right. But we're carrying the load of all the safety of the whole city. There is 140 homes at the northwest corner of that property, track homes, although it was exist before. And they should have, these are the people that they should pay the majority of the cost of this development. To penalize one client and impose unproportionate requirement for nine or 10 lots...
So this is a standard development condition that, as long as we've been a commission, we've...
Yes, sir.
We've imposed on every development we know about. So you're suggesting we're penalizing your particular client's property?
What I'm saying, sir, that...
That was you suggesting?
What I'm saying, that this is not proportioned with the size of the development, that's...
The size of the development is not our choice, that's the choice of the property owner. And how they choose to develop the property in relationship to the zoning and general plan of the community is their choice, and the regulations that are in force, and the policies and procedures that are in force.
The city...
Right?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Those are what we are obliged to recommend and approve, and if applicants choose to take issue with what we ultimately recommend and approve, there's a vehicle to resolve that, okay? But I am concerned that you're quoting case law to us about, in an attempt to threaten us...
No, not at all, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, that's the way I'm taking it, that's the way I'm taking it.
No, 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 I'm just trying to bring cases, just to...
So why don't you complete your statement, and we'll see if the rest of the commission has any other questions, otherwise, you're done. Thank you.
I'm not really trying to threaten anybody, or that's not the intention, the intention trying to say that there should be some essential nexus between the requirements...
So what would you have us do?
Well, I mean, the city, they should have some rough proportionality, so they...
They should have what?
They should come up with some requirement proportional to the development.
And what are you suggesting? You're asking us to do something, what are you asking us to do?
Is to remove this right turn.
Just remove the right turn, and you'd be happy?
Yes, sir, remove the right, the requirements.
But I think, I think a concern is, what Mr. Workman said, is if we don't impose that condition right now, in the future, it will be impossible to go back and fix that, should that be needed.
Without taking, without condemnation.
Right, right. And I think another thing that I noticed was, was the cost of the phone pole, and when the economy was better several years ago, that didn't seem to be a concern. But now that the economy is not so great, and the building's not happening as it was, now that becomes a big concern, and I understand that, I think a lot of people have been impacted. But the economical impact shouldn't, to me, make us, you know, change the condition that was imposed originally, just because it's going to cost more money now, or it's going to impact the pocketbook more now than it would have three years ago. And so...
You know, I think that the city should come up with some individualized determination, that this requirement and this dedication is related both in nature and extent to the proposed development impact. And that's really our attention, that this requirement is not proportioned to the impact of our development. And that's what I'm hoping that you take a look at.
So if this development didn't happen to have an Edison pole on the corner that you were required to remove, would you be before us?
No, leave that to the owner, they might be that the case.
I'll take that as a no, thank you.
Anything further, Commander?
The only other comment I'd like to make is, I understand cost, I think we're all business people up here, you know, many people in the audience are business people, so we understand cost compared to return. And things have changed over the last few years, that doesn't change the impact to the public safety. And in my eyes, I'm not going to speak for the entire commission, but there's nothing that trumps public safety. And so, looking at it through those eyes, you know, that's where my comments come from. And to say that your project is only going to impact five in and five out, I've lived in this valley for 49 years, and I can't remember too many years where we haven't grown. I can remember driving down to the San Fernando Valley on Sierra Highway. And so, if your logic were to hold up as far as growth in the valley, we should have never built the 14 freeway. Does that make sense?
Five in and five out is based on the technical, the Traffic Institute, that's how we do the calculation.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but you have also built, you've also bought a lot on Avenue K. Do you believe that there will be other businesses and other tracks that will be built along Avenue K within a mile radius of your project?
I'm not really sure.
I think all of us would have to say, there's a pretty good chance there's going to be other projects, and all of those projects will have impact on the traffic on your corner. And that's the challenge, is you purchased a lot that is on the east corner of westbound traffic. And so I think that there's a lesson to be learned by me and the entire audience in this commission, and probably you and the owner of this property, that in the future, if you buy a west corner lot on eastbound traffic, you need to look at what's going to happen in the future when you, when you start to develop that lot. Because there are going to be the public safety features in there, they're not going to go away. We've been very consistent, there'll be 22 projects that were referenced to this evening, and all 22 of them had the exact same situation with that deceleration lane. So that's, I think that's the situation. I understand what you're talking about business-wise, and yet, there's public safety that we have to think about.
You know, our neighbors, City of Palmdale, they do not require right turn in residential area. And if it's commercial, I would agree with you 100%, because you need the stacking, you need the right turn for stacking of cars. This is, like I mentioned, between two hours, four and six, we're developing, maybe two cars are going to come in as a result of this development. And so you don't require stacking cars, they come in and they go in. If there is a cross-section, and there is a commercial, I would agree with you 100%, and there was no need for me to come and argue your point. And I can see the city requirement, and I will even support the city in that requirement. But this is not an intersection, this is a T. And most cars are going to come in the morning, they're going to go toward the freeway, they're going to come in the evening, they're going to come from the freeway and get into Seventh Street East. So the impact of this development is very small to overall, even 10, 20, 50 years, it's only nine or 10 homes, that's what we have. The other development to the, to the west, they generate some traffic, but I look at their map, and most of their cars, they go also through Fifth Street and Sixth Street, they go east. So through the whole intersection, the T intersection, I don't think, I mean, may I ask, was there any accident happened last 10 years in that intersection? Or 15 years? I mean, this should be a case study, that the city say, okay, well, we have so many accidents happened there, and that's why we're going to do this, and this, and this. There is more major intersection that this city had here in the City of Lancaster, and they have a lot of intersections, a lot of accidents. Is there any accident happened for the last 10 years in that intersections? And based on that, if there is a, if there is an accident there, and there is repetition on these accidents, then we say, yeah, of course, we need a right turn.
Does the commission have any other questions of the applicant?
No, the only other statement I'd say is, you're not addressing a project commission, you're addressing a planning commission. And we have to plan for the city for the future. I've lived here for 49 years, I plan on living here for a long while after, and I'm going to put my stamp of approval on safe projects.
I salute you for that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, the applicant?
All right, thank you, sir.
Do we have any other speakers? Come right ahead.
Chris Welch.
Mr. Walsh, is it?
Welch.
Welch, I'm sorry, go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a homeowner on Seventh Street East, and you guys are absolutely correct. We need that turn lane. It is dangerous, I've witnessed an accident there about a month ago. It's, I'd gladly see some of these houses come over there, as long as they're not Section 8, and keep my house value kind of high. But we need that in that lane. So, that's basically all I have to say, you guys are absolutely correct.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any questions from anyone? All right, thank you, sir. Any other speaker?
Not on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So then, without objections, appropriate to close the public hearing? And either consider a motion or comment. I do have a couple of questions of staff on this matter. And the city attorney. I did not pick up the sightings that the gentleman referenced, I don't know if you did, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, they're the, he was referring to the Nolan-Dolan decisions, they're exaction cases, and essentially, he's correct, any exaction or dedication has to be roughly proportional to the impact that a development is creating, and there has to be a nexus between the development that's being proposed and the effect you're trying to mitigate.
And our, and our condition of a right-of-way dedication and improvement, notwithstanding the public utilities which are out of our purview, is that correct?
Correct.
We have no, we have no control over the public utility that happens to be in the right-of-way, we didn't place it there, nor did we, nor did we dedicate that right-of-way, the utility did.
It sounds to me essentially what you're asking is requiring the relocation of the utility, is that per se disproportionate, or per...
Well, first of all, whether it is or it isn't is not the question yet, that would come next, possibly. The statement that I'm making is that the public utility, its right-of-way and the location of its fixtures and equipment are not within our purview, we do not control that, we, the city, do not necessarily control that. We do have certain ordinances on the books that require undergrounding of utilities, that up to a certain kilowatt, 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 whatever it is, KV, I think it's under 50,000 or below, or undergrounded 50,000 and above, they're not, or something to that effect. At any rate, we don't control, well, my point is, we don't control the utility. So the happenstance of where a power pole is located in a public right-of-way really is not of a principal concern in the, in the decisions that we make relative to Nolan, all right?
I would agree with, I mean, from what I know, I would agree with that statement, yes.
Okay. So based on what you know about this tonight, based on the information we've heard, and the staff report, and everything we've seen, do you think we're at risk under Nolan?
Well...
Seriously risk?
Probably not, I mean, that's a factual question, that's not a question for me to answer, that's really a question for maybe Mr. Workman to answer, that's just a purely factual question, that's not a, that's not a legal question.
All right. Mr. Workman? Do you care to comment on that?
I'm not sure what I would say, I always considered Nolan-Dolan case to be more of a legal matter, but if the question is whether or not I think we're at risk from that because of we're imposing this condition, I would say no, that's my personal opinion.
The condition has existed for many years now?
Well...
Since the map was originally approved.
Oh, yeah, at least since then, it was probably several years before that. I've only been doing the subdivision conditions for 16 years, and I don't remember it not being required on arterial streets.
I don't recall it either, and been involved in a few subdivisions, that's for sure. So what, the point I'm trying to get at is, are we doing, are, is staff recommending, and are we imposing an unreasonable restrictive condition on a tentative track map that we don't typically apply to other tentative track maps in similar circumstances?
No, I would say that we are not, the only difference in this case happens to be the size of the subdivision. It's not the size of the subdivision that's really driving the condition, it is more the location of the subdivision being on the quarter-mile intersection of a primary arterial. If it were a 10 lot, 100 lot, you know, it's the size of the subdivision that's not really being critical in this, it's the location of the subdivision that is driving the condition.
Which, again, we have no control over. Yeah, it's within the applicant's purview to attempt to develop their property, should they choose, within the regulations as they exist when they make their application.
Yes, that is correct.
Which, in fact, they did some six or however how many years ago, when this project was approved. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? All right, then it's appropriate to consider a motion on this matter, we have the recommendation before us.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 10-09, denying the request on tentative track map number 62873, amended.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It's been moved in the seconded, please vote. It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next item is vesting tentative track map number six-nine-seven-oh-seven, uh, which is another recommendation for denial without prejudice. Could we have a staff report on this, please?
Chairman, votes and commissioners, this is another project with, which staff is recommending denial without prejudice due to lack of progress. The application was filed on October eighth, two thousand and nine. Since January tenth, two thousand and eight, Development Review Committee meeting, there has been no progress on the project. Staff sent the applicant two letters by certified mail on February twelfth, two thousand and nine, and August twenty-fifth, two thousand and nine, asking the applicant to either withdraw or submit revisions. We had, we received no response from the applicant. Again, state law generally holds that the development application should be processed in six months or after environmental work is done. Also, the information in the file and environmental studies have become obsolete since the project has been sitting here for two and a half years, since it's been submitted. Staff is therefore recommending that the application be denied without prejudice. That concludes my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right, then, any questions? So it's appropriate to open the public hearing and consider any testimony. Do we have testimony on this item?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? None? All right, then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number One-zero dash one-zero, denying vesting tentative track map number six-nine-seven-zero-seven without prejudice.
Second that? Thank you. All right, further discussion? It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next item is, is, again, new public hearing, or actually, yes, it is a new public hearing, uh, the citywide rezoning, review of the draft zoning map and draft mixed-use zone ordinance. Uh, this is a new item, and we have a staff report on this.
Hey, there will be a, a couple of us speaking to you tonight, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Just by way of some background, as you recall, at your February meeting, you, you opened your first opportunity for the public to comment on the citywide rezoning. That consists not only of the draft zoning map, but as you'll hear shortly, now we have issued out for public review and for your review also, uh, the draft of what's known as our mixed-use zone classification. I'm going to shortly have Chun Ying, our associate planner, give you a rundown on that through a PowerPoint of what the, uh, uh, goal of that zoning classification is and the approach we've taken on it. I would like to call to your attention the fact that there are, at this point, at least two speakers who would like to talk and give testimony on the citywide rezoning process, and we've also provided to you, I believe, a couple of written documents, um, uh, in regards to specific sites. One of those writers is actually also here and has submitted a card, so he will also speak on that.
Yeah, when it comes time for it, I'll put him in the record. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, I have nothing else to add on the draft zoning map, but I will ask Chun Ying to provide to you, uh, a brief PowerPoint on the mixed-use zone classification and, uh, our approach towards it.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to retrieve the, uh, the little pointer from Mr. Lurkey.
Mike Finney, you'll have to stand here to do it.
At Brian's suggestion, I'm going to stand here. So the, the mixed-use zone is, um, is the implementation of an adopted land use designation in our general plan. The general plan was adopted in two thousand and nine. We've been working on drafting the mixed-use zone to implement the general plan, and this is a broad overview of what mixed-use entails. Mixed-use is the integration of a variety of land uses, including residential, office, commercial and service and employment, and it's best developed in a compact manner, connecting varying uses and bringing them within close proximity to each other. This is not mixed-use, it's the same thing over and over again. This is a better example of mixed-use. The, kind of, the top, second and third-story area would be residential uses. You may have office or retail uses on the bottom floor, again, bringing compatible uses within close proximity to each other. This is a conceptual mixed-use shopping center. Again, you may have residential components integrated with commercial and office uses. This is just the, uh, diagram, uh, illustrating typical vertical mixed-use, the yellow representing residential uses, the red, commercial. Here's an example of a vertical mixed-use structure, again, residences over, uh, commercial. Here's another example, of course, the, the architecture, as you can see, can vary greatly. But there's also, mixed-use can also be of a horizontal nature, in this case, a commercial in front of residential. Here's another diagram, uh, showing what horizontal mixed-use can look like. You have a, what looks like a commercial shopping center oriented towards the corner, and you may have condos or apartments towards the back. But one of the features of mixed-use is pedestrian connectivity, and they're oriented in such a manner where residents of the apartments or condos can easily access the commercial uses. Another illustration of horizontal mixed-use, again, you can see the close proximity of the residential uses with commercial office uses connected by pedestrian walkways. Mixed-use is not a new concept, this is a photo of an older mixed-use building, you can see the, the shops located on the ground floor level. But mixed-use is, is being built now, this is a photo of a mixed-use neighborhood in Stapleton, Colorado. I'm going to talk about some benefits of, uh, the mixed-use zones. We believe that it would promote efficient use of land, infrastructure, and other resources. It would offer pedestrian-friendly and well-connected living and shopping environments, and it would seek to improve the quality of our designs and also provide diverse housing types. The zoning code would implement a mixed-use with, uh, through regulations that are designed to facilitate and encourage mixed-use developments with pedestrian connections between varying uses. And one of the features of the mixed-use zones is, are regulations that are designed to promote quality design while still allowing for flexibility and creativity. There are three mixed-use zones classifications, mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial, and mixed-use employment. They differ in the emphasis. Mixed-use neighborhood has an emphasis on compact residential development built in close proximity to commercial and office uses. It offers pedestrian connections and gathering spaces, including trails and parks. Uh, the uses may also include apartments, condos, small-lot, single-family subdivisions, but commercial and office uses are still allowed, and it, they would be connected through a highly connected street pattern, such as a grid or modified grid block layout. I'm going to show you some areas of where the proposed mixed-use neighborhood zones are. This is the area south of Foxfield. You can see the streets, uh, it's bound about Avenue H, I, and Thirtieth West and Forty-Fifth West, it's the darker pink area on the map. This is a map showing a couple of other mixed-use neighborhood areas. There's the, uh, area east of the, of downtown, otherwise known as the Harrow Tract, um, that's proposed for mixed-use neighborhood. There's also an area across the street from the hospital over by Avenue J and Fifteenth West, otherwise known as the, the Lotree, there's a vision plan, uh, for that area, but the mixed-use zone would be compatible with that vision. Couple of other small areas where mixed-use neighborhood is proposed, uh, there's a, a small area by Avenue L, Thirty, Thirtieth West, and there's a, a smaller area over in East Lancaster, Twentieth East and Lancaster Boulevard.
That, that area north of L is, uh, north of what, State of Brothers, is that what that is? Is that be right? Okay.
Correct.
All right, thanks. And Twentieth East and Lancaster, northeast and northwest corners, yeah. And there's a new school going in over there somewhere, isn't there?
Right.
Currently under construction.
Hmm?
I believe it's...
I believe the school's actually currently under construction.
Under construction, right, yeah. Okay, great, sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
These sites are approximately in the ten-acre, twelve-baker range. Uh, these are some slides, um, showing what a mixed-use neighborhood could be like. Here's a conceptual diagram. It's, you can see residential uses, but also commercial use in the corner connected, it's highly connected. This may be a typical streetscape of the mixed-use neighborhood. The, as you can see, uh, the garage is de-emphasized, and what you see oriented towards the street are mostly porches, entrances, uh, and landscaping. Uh, same thing here, you see a, a house that's connected to the street with a direct pedestrian connection, there's a stoop and a porch. Also, you can see parkways. Mixed-use neighborhood structures may have alley garage access. This is a bird's-eye view of, uh, some homes, it's a conceptual diagram, but again, if you see the, uh, the locations of the garages, they're pushed back, uh, on the lot. Uh, some more photos, again, the, the photo on the left, there is a recess garage, but with a carriage unit on top of the recess garage. What we're trying to achieve here is, uh, multiple types of residential uses, uh, giving builders the flexibility to do something different than what we currently have. And this is actually a, a multi-family structure that looks like a single-family structure. Again, it's well-integrated into the mixed-use neighborhood. Again, we're trying to achieve quality design. Here's another streetscape photo. And here's an aerial view, aerial view of Stapleton, which is, again, as I mentioned, one of the newer, uh, mixed-use neighborhoods. The other mixed-use zone is mixed-use commercial, it's a commercial emphasis characterized by destination features and social gathering areas. They would be typically located along major arterial streets and are intended to contribute to the local streetscape through vertical elements of multi-story structures built closer to the front property line. These are some of the mixed-use commercial locations. This area is over by just west of Valley Central, where the west side Walmart's at, it's considered our front row center area, Thirtieth West between Avenue I and Lancaster Boulevard. There's also, uh, a designation on the west side of Twentieth West, um, just south of Avenue I. Couple more mixed-use commercial locations, uh, this is, uh, adjacent to some existing commercial areas, uh, this is over by Highway fourteen, uh, near Avenue J eight. Some photos illustrating what mixed-use commercial may look like, uh, it features pedestrian-oriented shopping. Couple more photos showing plazas and gathering spaces for mixed-use commercial areas. And again, it's, you know, designed to have pedestrian amenities. The third mixed-use zone is mixed-use employment. It's an area for non-retail employment uses in close proximity to residential uses. Uh, uses may include, uh, multifamily residential in conjunction with office professional, business park type, live-work, and some light industrial uses, and it's not intended for heavier industrial uses. These are the mixed-use employment locations on the proposed zoning maps. Uh, this, it's the lighter pink area on this map, again, that's just south of Foxfield, it plays off of the industrial uses in, in the Foxfield specific plan. Uh, so it's just south of Avenue H, also runs along Thirtieth West. And the other major area of mixed-use employment is the west side of Sierra Highway between Avenue K and Avenue L. These are the areas where we envision this type of, uh, use, where it's a more of a, more of an office-park environment. But also, this photo is a live-work type structure, and in a live-work setting, uh, you have, uh, the workers live in the same structure as where they, uh, work. And here's another, uh, illustration of a mixed-use employment, uh, structure. And this concludes, uh, my presentation on mixed-use zones, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Just so folks understand, uh, the commission meets the week prior to the regular meeting, it's a public meeting, however, we rarely have anyone attend, where staff presents the agenda to us, and, um, we don't deliberate, but we have the opportunity to interact with staff and ask questions and so forth. So we've seen this presentation before, and we had quite a number of questions. So, at any rate, um, uh, we were also provided with copies of the draft regulations, um, and exhibits for our review, and, and those are available to the public on the public website, as well as, uh, at the planning counter, and I think in the agenda in the back as well, I believe, aren't there? Okay. So if anyone is interested, um, in reading them, our intent tonight is not to adopt this item. Our intent is to gather input from the public and, uh, listen to what folks have to say regarding this. Uh, do we have any questions of staff before we proceed with the public hearing? All right. So, without objection, the public hearing is open, and for the record, we received two, uh, pieces of correspondence, one from, um, uh, the owner of accessory parcel three-one-five-four-zero-zero-one-zero-two-nine, which is approximately thirty-nine acres, um, on the southeast corner of East Avenue H and Twentieth Street East. And we've been, we've all had, received a copy of that. We also received a piece of correspondence, uh, from Del Sur Ranch, um, and it references accessory parcels three-two-six-five-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-eight and three-two-six-five-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-two. And it also talks about the Del Sur Ranch Master Plan Community Track Number zero-six-six-two-four-one. My bet is, we'll hear from that person this evening. All right. So, uh, we have no other correspondence?
I've not received any other correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. So then, the public hearing is open, and can we hear some speakers, please?
Ray Shavira.
Mr. Shavira. Welcome, Mr. Shavira, long time no see.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff, thank you for your graciousness, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm here wearing several hats, as if I needed some to cover up my bald head, but anyway, uh, some of you may remember that some of our past activity here... some of you may remember that some of our past activity here has dealt with local alcohol and tobacco control. I served with some of you here and in the audience on the General Plan Advisor Committee about two or three years ago. A wear hat that's close to the location of my concern, that's 40th Street East. I'm president of the Mobile Home Owners Association and Sherwood Mobile Home Park. I'm also a member of Lancaster Baptist Church. So with respect to the, basically the length of 40th East between I and K, those are my chief concerns. Mr. Chairman, may I pass and give these items? Well, basically, 40th Street East, at least mostly on the western side, is the eastern border of Lancaster as it exists now. Once upon a time, I think, once upon a time, it was 30th. Our chief concern is with the undesirable development, if any, we can't predict the future, of any of those corners with respect to the selling of alcoholic beverages and tobacco products, which almost all offsite outlets sell, and also concurrent sale of drug paraphernalia, or at least portions of drug paraphernalia that are sold frequently at off-sale premises, convenience stores, many markets, et cetera. As you can see by that item that I just passed to you, I received this morning from the ABC Department of Manice, which covers our area, one of the locations, the northwest corner of Avenue K, a major arterial, I think, as Mr. Workman described it, is already a high-crime area by over 200%. Now, we know that there's this Superior Supermarket and a restaurant and a CVS Pharmacy, all three alcohol outlets that are already approved for the southwest corner of 30th and K. Mr. May has explained to me that the large Hispanic population in that area merits such an establishment. Superior Market is like Vallarta. At least it is down below. It's a quality, but it's basically a Latino market operation. From my perspective, if that's the case, we're going to be saturated in that corner with the sale of alcoholic beverages. If that's good enough, because you have other quality aspects to the development. Mr. Chairman, I'm about to run out of time.
I think you have run out of time.
May I ask for an extra 30 seconds?
Actually, if we do that, then we have to do that with everybody, so your time has expired. However, at the end of the hearing, there's public comment from the floor, and you can continue your remarks then, if you'd like to stick around.
Thank you much, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. All right then, do we have another speaker?
Alex Baharlo.
Okay. Before Mr. Baharlo starts, is it possible to, just to clarify in my mind, the previous speaker had talked about 30th East and K, and it's my understanding that Superior Markets is no longer committed to that site and will be relocating to the former Albertsons at 10th Street?
That is indication that we have received.
10th Street East and Avenue J.
Yes, although the applicant's approval remains in place.
Understand. It's a site-specific approval for a conditional use permit for a market of that size and the other tenants that he chose to identify, although it's a site approval that we have, conditional use permit for specific square footage on that corner.
Correct.
And specific uses. Okay. Just, I just wanted to be clear. Okay. Mr. Baharlo, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have called you up and wasted your time. Nice and lean, you don't need the exercise, right?
I don't know about that.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the commission. I do represent Del Sur Ranch, and this is in regards to the proposed zoning and the three items I wanted to talk to you about really quickly tonight. The first is properties number one and two, which are west of Del Sur Ranch proper, and that's correct. That'd be great, thank you. And these are both 40-acre parcels, 1,300 by 1,300 feet, and staff's original proposal for these was to have the property be zoned R7,000 and have two zones of R15 and R10 as a buffer. Once you put in the R15, which is 330 feet, and then the R10, which is another 330 feet, you're left with 660 feet of R7,000. And in addition to that, there's an Edison line, power line, that runs through our property, which further segments the remainder R7,000. So our request to staff was to make the transitional zone less, make it less or more narrow so that the leftover R7,000 can actually be planned efficiently. And staff agreed that they would put in the R15 and the R10,000 within this 330 feet, which we appreciate very much. But before you here tonight, we've run this by our engineer, and again, due to the Edison easement here, we're asking that we limit the buffer zone to only one row of R10 or R15, which we think is sufficient really to do what staff intended to do, which is to buffer the rural and the urban residential designations. So our request is to have one row of R10 or R15,000, which would then be followed by street, and then to designate the rest of it as R7,000 so that we can plan it appropriately. The other issue is we have to create a buffer between the Edison line and the residential area, residential zone, which again would make it more difficult to plan efficiently. So having, you know, superimposing all of that together makes it quite a segmented property for a 40-acre parcel if it's zoned, you know, it has three different zones.
You do know, you do have the opportunity to average your lot sizes. You know that, right?
Yes, we understand that. And again, that would...
And you mentioned R15 is rural? Is that your view of what a R15,000 is?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
The rural is the stuff that's west of us.
I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the stuff that's west of us. It would require replanning this, and again, we would like to keep it, we see these two parcels as zones of, phases of Del Sur Ranch, so we would like to keep them as R7,000 and use the same product that we're using here and just carry it over the same streets.
Have those maps been filed with the city?
Del Sur Ranch is an approved map. These have not been filed with the city yet.
So you're still in the planning mode?
Yes.
Just like we are?
Yes, we are. It would just require us to rethink it, and again, really, the Edison easement going through makes it very difficult, and that's really the only reason we're asking that the buffer zone to be narrower, is that we have some room to maneuver the R7,000 lots in there.
So how long has Edison been there?
They just put it in recently.
Back on power lines again. This is a lot of fun.
Pardon me?
I said, "We're back on power lines again." This is a lot of fun.
Yes, and unfortunately, there's nothing you can do about it. It's, but again, this is not so much a cost issue. The Edison line is there, and it's really a matter of what the lines do to the property is segmented. I mean, now we've got a property that's got, you know, four different zones on it, and again, if this was a larger parcel like this, we would understand if there was, you know, two tiers to zone it, but there's really nobody here on this side. This isn't the Annal Bakers. This is not even the city of Lancaster, it's the county, so there's really not much to buffer, and we, again, think an R15,000 zone would be sufficient to do that.
All right.
And if I can really quickly address Del Sur Ranch...
Your time's expired.
Okay.
However, there may be some questions.
Okay.
To clarify what you're saying. So sometime after you acquired this property, right away was acquired by Edison.
Yes, condemned, correct.
And there was compensation offered, whether it was settled, who knows? But at any rate, so consideration was given for the value of the taking.
Correct.
Right? Probably on vacant land because there's no filed map yet, right?
That's correct.
So this commission deliberated the land use and the general plan revision, and considered testimony, I don't recall it was yours, but others, and written communication regarding this similar matter, maybe not precisely the same way. And we made a recommendation to city council. City council held hearings, just like we did, and they adopted the general plan. So what's facing us today, if I understand what our hearing is about today, is to consider confirming the zoning to the general plan. That's what we're about.
Yes.
Okay. And you're asking us to not do that?
No, no. The staff has made a recommendation for the zoning. We've requested a change to the proposed zoning. I mean, the urban designation remains the same that was passed in the general plan. I'm not asking, that can't be changed at this point, but the zoning is a proposed zoning, which is part of the draft zoning, which is before you. And this parcel was zoned R15, R10, and R7, all of which are within the urban residential designation of the general plan. What I'm requesting is that the R, that the three zones, which is the R15, R10, and the R7, the first of which is 330 feet, the second of which is 330 feet, and then the remainder of which, which is the R7, is the 660 remaining feet, I'm asking that we narrow down the first, the buffer, what's really, or explained to me as a buffer zone between rural and urban residential, to one row of R15 zoning or R10 zoning, and to keep the remainder of the property as R7,000. So I'm not asking you to revise the designation, just to consider a different formation, I guess, of the zoning. And as I indicated, staff has agreed with me to put in R15, one row of R15 and one row of R10 in the 330 feet, but I'm asking for the planning commission to consider just one row of R15 or R10 as a buffer zone.
I think I'm clear. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers on this matter?
I have no other cards for this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, and, no, continue the public hearing. I beg your pardon, we are not going to close the public hearing since we're going to hear this again next month, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the public hearing is still open. I've got some questions regarding the land use designations as proposed. The two previous speakers, first Mr. Shavira, who will undoubtedly continue his comments at the end of the meeting, but what I get from his concerns is the proliferation of retail establishments selling alcoholic beverages and tobacco products in the east side of the community. When we consider the general plan revision and made a recommendation to city council, which they ultimately adopted, I do not recall any changes on the east side in the commercial arena. I know on the west side there were some additions, actually.
Yeah, there were a few. If you'll recall, we did designate commercial at the northwest corner of 30th East and Avenue J.
No, no, I recall doing that, but what I'm saying is that the city council didn't modify those recommendations on the east side.
No, they did not make any changes in the east side.
But what we did on, what we did in that 30th East and J configuration was remove, it was, I don't think there was a net gain, and we removed some at the corner of 10th, excuse me, 30th and J8, I believe. So it was a...
Yes, that's correct.
So-called exchange, if you will.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, in the overall, looking at the east side kind of overall, and along 40th Street East, which I sense that Mr. Shavira had most of his concerns with, the one that he's called out, the northwest corner of Avenue K and 40th Street East, has been designated and zoned commercial for at least 20, 20 years that I'm aware of. There's never been anything proposed on it that I'm aware of, but it has been. The site, we did expand the site at the southwest corner of 40th East and Avenue J. Previously, there was a commercial designation that encompassed, I think, only the American Legion post that's there, and we increased the amount of commercial at that corner to try to make that a more viable potential location, considering that it is probably most centered, if you will, as far as the 40th Street East sites. And then just in case there was the opportunity further north, we did find a site at the southwest corner of I and 40th Street East that was large enough, in our view, to accommodate commercial development and designated that also. So I guess in a sense, there were one and a half additional sites designated on 40th as part of the general plan, but I certainly recall, and I can't remember if there was any kind of testimony directly in front of the commission on this, one of the reasons we did that is that there were concerns raised by east side residents that they didn't have enough potential commercial sites for the future, and were concerned that if we didn't designate a sufficient number, we might lose those to residential subdivision, which has in fact happened in the past. So I think if we look back at the reasons we did it, that was one of the drivers for it.
Well, that also met some of the objectives, or all of the objectives of the general plan. I mean, the purpose of the general plan, to designate for future development sufficient, set aside sufficient land for varying development opportunities in strategic locations, particularly commercial and other employment as well, and that would match infrastructure availability and primary traffic arterials and that sort of thing, and that's basically what we've done, or at least recommended, and the city council ultimately adopted. Although, you know, I, you know, I hear the concerns in some of the, and I have some of the same concerns relative to proliferation of alcohol beverage sales and those impacts and the nexus between the sales and crime. I mean, I think we all are concerned about public safety in that regard, but nearly all alcohol beverage purveyors are required to have a conditional use permit, and public hearings are held on every application, other than bona fide restaurants, I believe, right?
Actually, they're still required the use permit hearing. They are not subject to some of the same separation distance requirements, but neither are incidental sellers such as a drugstore or a grocery store. However, a mini-market or a liquor store does have, as you'll recall, separation distance requirements.
And the incidental, so-called incidental is limited by square footage of the beverage display and sales opportunities versus the size of the store. Yeah, Mr. Shavira and I have had lots of discussions over a lot of years, and I don't want to relive some of them, but I certainly learned a lot about the impacts of, and the misuse of alcohol beverage, that's for sure, from Mr. Shavira, and for that, I really appreciate his interest, and I'll look forward to hearing the rest of his comments at the end of the meeting. On this other matter, on the other matter, from Del Sur Ranch, what's the staff's position on that?
I've had a couple of meetings with Mr. Baharlo. The primary thing that we're looking for from a staff perspective is how do you arrange the zoning classifications, and he is correct, all three of those fit under the... And he is correct, all three of those fit under the urban residential land use classification. But how do we arrange those such that we achieve some kind of transition, which is one of the policies called for in the general plan? Our original proposal to you, I think, was, you know, a way to try to do that on the two westerly parcels that he's pointed out. Essentially, what I have, in looking at it, said that I would support is designating the zoning such that you get a row of R-15,000 lots, and we've done this in some similar circumstances, where you use those lots as the fronting lots on a local street. And in his situation, he would have what's known as a local street, which would be 107th Street West, and you make those wide enough to essentially match what you may have across the street in a rural designation. I do think you need an additional row of R-10,000 to kind of transition that, between that R-15,000 and an R-7,000 area further to the east. So my indication to him was, in order to achieve that and still maintain some kind of reasonable line location, if you will, based upon the way that property breakdowns occur in this area, that I would support 165-foot depth of R-15,000, which, once you, you know, take out street and so forth, allows you by and large about 100-foot wide by 150-foot deep residential lot, which I think would certainly be compatible with any potential rural development now or in the future across the street. And then you have another tier essentially of R-10,000 that would face internal, to an internal street, before you reach the R-7,000 area.
On both sides of the street.
Yeah, or on one would probably be sufficient. But essentially, that was my discussion with him, as opposed to the current proposed pattern. I did indicate that I would still, because of just the general consistency of zoning patterns, I'd prefer that the northern portion, for some depth on the most northern property, remain R-10,000, simply because that also is a transition northward into a more rural area. So that was the gist of the conversation.
What about the gap between the two parcels? Now, one of the substation looks...
Yeah, potentially. The area between them right now is a rural designation. I, you know, I guess in looking at it, you know, certainly the one on the north, you'd have lots that would back up to a secondary street in that setting. Normally, what we'll do in those circumstances is require a wider landscape setback of some kind, but even given that, if you were to have development here and development on the south part of what would be G-8, even in our rural areas now, we are generally not fronting those rural lots onto even secondary streets, because we've had issues with that in terms of long-term viability. So that would be my recommendation. I think the other thing to keep in mind, both of these parcels are immediately adjacent to the approved Del Sur Ranch project. My feeling, given their size versus the size of the Del Sur Ranch project, is that they will not develop independently. They would ultimately develop in concert with the Del Sur project, if that project ever does go forward. And my thought is that, at some point, we would work, given the location of that easement line and other, you know, potential issues, to try to integrate those, perhaps in a better way, into the Del Sur Ranch project. But neither of those parcels was really considered in that original project layout. And so, given the challenge of trying to come up with a reasonable zoning pattern, you know, I think the initial recommendation and even the modification that I had indicated I would support, I think would do that. But I wouldn't support doing only R-10 to R-7 or R-15 to R-7. I think you need somewhat more of a transition than that, in that situation.
So then, when this comes back for the final hearing, assuming we have a final hearing in April and consider a recommendation of adoption of this to the City Council, you will make that change?
We can provide you a diagram indicating what that change would be, and, you know, that staff would support that. Obviously, from the commission's standpoint, you would still have to consider whether that proposal is adequate, in your view, to implement the transitional provisions of the general plan.
Wouldn't you want to also overlay that on the remaining property between one and two on this hand sketch map? Just to be consistent?
I think in the long term, perhaps, but recall, the general plan didn't designate that intervening piece as urban. It kept it as rural, so.
Yep.
I do understand the little bit of wackiness involved in that, but, once again, I...
This may not be the only wacky one that we've...
True.
...had experience with, huh?
No, probably a minor one, in consideration of some others.
Does anyone else have any questions about this one, concerns?
I had a question. Is there a precedent? Is there something that we can look to, to see an example of transition like this?
The best example that I can give you is if you look at the project that was built in the vicinity of 50th Street West and Avenue K-8. In that situation, that was an R-10,000 piece of property, and Kaufman and Brode built that in the early 1990s, as I recall. But what we did as a city in working with them, there were areas where you had rural lots fronting on the south side of Avenue K-8, east of 50th Street West, and also on 45th Street West, over on the eastern part of the project. While not exactly the same, what we did in those situations was because a lot of those lots were, I think acre lots, that were already there, we required the developer and the subdivision, well, they weren't in the same, the subdivider to essentially make the lots fronting K-8 and 45th 20,000 square feet. And what we did is we got a lot width on the north side of K-8 that was much more compatible in appearance with the rural lots that already existed on the south side of K-8. Those were built out by the developer, and then, as you moved northward, they moved into an R-10,000 designation. And that seems, that project seems to have worked all right, and, you know, the residents in the area seem satisfied with that solution. So if you want a kind of a visual about how it could look, that would be my best example for you.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the applicant is requesting to go from, what, a total of 300-foot buffer or 600-foot buffer?
Right now, as we have it on the draft zoning map, there would be 330 feet of R-15,000 and 330 feet of R-10 along the west side of both of those parcels. And then, on the most northerly parcel, which, yeah, which is up at about what would be G-4, there's an R-10,000 designation that moves along the northern part of that parcel. What he's proposed is that you have either a row of R-15,000 or a row of R-10,000, and then the rest of it as R-7.
See, I didn't understand that to be the case. I understood it to be 300 feet of buffer, which would have actually been a couple rows of R-15 or R-10, correct? Not just one row?
No, one row, that's one.
One row.
Good question, it's one row of R-15.
Okay, so for a total of 300 feet?
No, one row would be 300.
One row would be 165 feet. Staff's comment to Mr. Baharlo and also to you is, if you look at a modification, we would say that it ought to be 165 feet of R-15,000, and then another 165 feet of R-10, before, for a total transitional area, if you will, 330 feet before you get to the R-7,000 area.
So it's reducing your original recommendation in half?
Right.
Yes, that would be correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Anybody have any heartburn with that? Anybody have any heartburn? No, good. All right. Okay, and then the other correspondence we had have, there's no speaker on it, however, were you going to address that or give us a report next time? Want to give us a report next time?
We can give you a more detailed report next time, or actually may be able to transmit you some additional information, but we did, it involves a site where there's an existing map. We've proposed the R-10,000 area along Avenue H as kind of the transitional area, and the concern in the letter is what would that do to their map? We took a look at it. We think that it would result in the loss of about eight to 10 lots, as we could best estimate from what their current map is. And of course, it's important to recognize that that would only happen in the event that they needed some kind of an extension from us, because they already have an approved tentative map, and the state, as you'll recall, has already given three years' worth of automatic extensions. But yes, it would have some effect on their map, although I'm sure they would not agree with this. We would say it's probably not, you know, a major effect. The letter seems to imply that it would be absolutely devastating, and I'm not sure the facts support that.
Well, yeah, they're talking about 20 acres, well, in fact, it's not. It's more like nine or eight or nine, but whatever. Well, why don't you, since folks take the time to write, and I mean, it's important to them, it should be, it's important to us, too, to hear what...
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll take a little closer look at it and transmit you some information on it, so you have that available for you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so, we have no other speakers on this matter? All right then, so the public hearing is continued, I think I had mentioned that previously, to the next regular meeting. We on to new business, abandonment of an excess flood control easement. Could we have a staff report on this, please?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this involves the Amargosa Creek Channel, essentially located between 10th Street West and Avenue L. There is an existing easement, drainage easement, on that site that has, for a number of years, been the pathway of that creek. As you are undoubtedly aware, the city has been working over the past few months to underground that in accordance with agreements between various parties, as well as the State Department of Fish and Game. And one of the things that we need to do is to establish a new easement for that. So the best approach to doing that is to essentially remove the entire old easement and then establish the new easement, which is what this action would enable to happen on the part of the City Council. As a planning commission, your role is to determine whether or not the abandonment of the easement, as well as the actions proposed, are consistent with the city's general plan. And from our viewpoint, it certainly is, and we've recommended to you that you make that finding.
All right, thank you. All right then, any questions from anyone? All right then, since this is a public hearing...
Actually, it's new business. You can allow testimony, but it was not noticed as a public hearing.
It was not, okay. Do we have anyone who wants to speak on it?
I have no cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so if I stand, so, no one wants to speak on it. So if I understand it correctly, the city has undertaken a development of flood control improvements in this vicinity. The flood control improvements that are currently underway, have been for some time, do not follow this particular right-of-way. It follows a different right-of-way.
Correct.
So the ministerial function is to remove an easement that's not being used and will never be used, and replace it with an easement that is, is going, is being used now in the development of flood control improvements on this particular property?
Correct.
No gain, no loss?
No.
All right? Very good. Long as we understand it. Okay, so, what's your pleasure? A motion, I guess, is in order on this?
I'll make a motion that we find that the abandonment of excess flood control easement at the location described is in conformance with the adopted general plan.
Second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded and in further discussion. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0, and that action will be transmitted to the City Council as part of their consideration.
Very good, thank you. Okay, directors, we're finished with the regular portion of the agenda, and now we're into director's announcements.
Just a brief reminder, for those of you attending next week is the Planning Commissioners Institute in Monterey. If you have any questions, contact us.
Very good, thank you. Anything from the members of the commission? All right, thank you. All right, public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. And we have speakers.
Mr. Chairman, given that Mr. Chavera had indicated he would add comments, I would suggest that you take his comments first.
All right. Go right ahead, Mr. Chavera.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the main concerns that some of us had on the east side, on vertical 40th East, was that we perceived a threat, maybe paranoia, of a mini-market setting up shop at the southwest corner of 40th East and I, directly across from where we live. Great location, but what a way to introduce people to the city and to exit them out of the city, on a 55 mile an hour speed zone. I know we have become quite creative over the years in imposing conditions of operation as a solution to many of our problems, without prohibition. Although I do know of two cases where I've been active in the past 15 years, where there are too many markets in the city, one on the east and one on the west, in which they do not sell alcoholic beverages of any sort, even years later. So that's a possibility, that a wise planning commission and City Council may allow concurrent sales of motor fuels with alcoholic beverages, I'm sorry, and allow the sale of motor fuels in a convenient setting without selling alcoholic beverages and related products. However, at the other corner, at the northwest corner of K and 40th, a high crime area already with very little development around it, a lot of empty lots, nice homes, that might not be an appropriate setting for sales of alcoholic beverages, but a quality restaurant could be set up there. Now, a lot of people on the east side would like to have quality... Now, a lot of people on the east side would like to have quality restaurants, such as they have in Palmville, Restaurant Row and that kind of thing. However, they may not know the price that we have to pay. But it's conceivable that there are some restaurants that don't sell alcoholic beverages, and there are still quality food establishments. Obviously, since we haven't dealt with this yet, but we have a proliferation of fast-food outlets in the city, and we all know about the obesity problems that relate to this valley. Health indicators show that quite well. Those are some of the fears we have, especially on that border area. We have really nothing on the east side, except a massive church. A church whose members don't drink or smoke, so where are the customs going to come from? Anyway, I'll leave you with that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shavira, thank you. Another speaker?
And also Mr. Baharlo, if he had additional commentary.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Second part of my request, I think, is less confusing than the first. This is more of a logistical matter. It's related to Del Sur Ranch proper, the master plan community, which is on the board. 650 acres, this is an approved vesta tentative tract map. There's an RPD, there's also a development agreement that runs along with it. In the proposed zoning, if you look at the zoning map, staff has recommended that some of the areas that you see on that map, such as the school site and the park site in the middle, which is in white, and then at the bottom, there's a retail site, staff is recommending that those areas are added to the new zoning map. And what we would like to request from you, and I've discussed this with Mr. Ludicki a little bit, is if staff would also make the effort to make the proposed zoning consistent with the approved vesta tentative tract map for the rest of the area, which is predominantly the residential areas. For example, there are areas right now that are R-10,000, which has nothing to do with the approved map or the intent of this development. And really, the map itself is approved for R-7,000. So there's a lot of confusion between the underlying zoning and the approved vesta tentative tract map, and we're asking for staff, to the extent possible, to make the two consistent, not just for the commercial and park and school, but for the entire site, including residential. The second request in relationship to this is, for the areas such as the school and the park, and I don't know the logistical way to do this, is to have an underlying R-7,000 zone, just in case either the city or school decide not to build. If they do, we have an obligation, there's no question about it. If they decide not to acquire the site, then that would allow us to convert it to residential. And again, that's only in the case that they decide not to do that. We're obligated to designate those sites as residential and, I'm sorry, as school and park sites. But predominantly, the request that I'm making before you is to make the proposed zoning and the approved vesta tentative tract map consistent as to the extent possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any comments, Mr. Ludicki?
I found interesting his comment that this was the least complicated one. I happen to think this is probably a little more, although I'll tell you from staff's standpoint, it's not that complicated, really. The development of the bulk of the Del Sur project, or at least the part of it that is owned by the Larwin Corporation, is governed by residential plan development that was approved through a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission in 2006. That approval was actually not obtained by Larwin, it was obtained at the time by Standard Pacific, who was the holder of that portion of the site. That is still the controlling development entitlement. He's correct, the map does not line up with the zoning classifications that are proposed. The existing zoning classifications don't line up with the approved map anyway. We have tried, to the extent possible, to line up things where we could, but I would tell you that, much like the lady who moves into an apartment and finds this flower box, and, you know, several months later, a friend comes and says, gee, your flower box is beautiful. What do you do? She goes, I don't know, I don't touch it. I would recommend that we not touch this very much, because there are provisions in the development agreement that I think we could possibly inadvertently short-circuit if we did, and I don't think that would be a wise approach. Case in point, his issue of the reversion to an underlying zoning classification, the development agreement itself calls out the requirement for two school sites. It also states that the applicant has the right to apply for zone changes. I would not feel comfortable in changing it any further than we've proposed through a citywide rezoning. So, if any of you want to dive into the long history of this project, I will set aside a couple hours and a room and the files. And I have had a couple meetings with Mr. Baharlo on this, so.
No more than three commissioners at a time?
No.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if anyone has a burning desire to hear this in our staff meeting. Interesting thing about school sites, which I have some familiarity with, the site configurations are, for an elementary site, are undersized. They weren't necessarily undersized back in 2002 and '03 and '04, when all these developments were coming together and before the specific plan was adopted, but they certainly are now, which is another challenge that you folks may be able to solve. But I'm assuming that when and if this project is developed, there'll be some interaction between Westside Union and the developer and the city to accommodate the need, you know, may not need two, but may need one larger one.
Yeah, and I think it's probably appropriate to deal with it in that setting.
So your recommendation is leave it alone, because the specific plan allows application to be filed for modification?
Yes.
It's my assumption, when and if development opportunity presents itself. We're not in that mode yet.
No.
All right.
No. And his lot sizes, to the extent that they don't line up with the existing zoning, are specifically approved through the RPD that is approved on the site, as well as the development standards that are associated with it. So there's no loss of entitlement facing him in this process.
And the Del Sur Ranch agreements have a determination of life in them, or are they an undetermined link?
The status right now is that he has an approved RPD. There is an approved, he doesn't have, but the firm he works for has, has an approved RPD. It has an approved vesting tentative tract map, and it has a development agreement that is valid until at least October 17th of 2012. So, and they are, I will tell you, in discussions with the city regarding the status of that development agreement, but nothing has transpired on that.
Okay, thank you. Vesting tentative maps, those have been extended by statute, right?
Not this one, because the state's approval only applied to maps that expired before a certain date, and because this vesting tentative map does not expire until October 17th of 2012, it was not, it was not extended by either of the previous state actions. So its expiration date remains at 2012.
Challenging. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Nope, do we have another speaker?
Nicole.
Nicole Parsons? Hello, Ms. Parsons, you're going to what?
Hi, Ms., hi, hi. I know, hi, I know we go to the same bank, and that makes me feel better, because I know you've probably walked the street over here, too. I'm for certain, because I was there, and I could even say I wrote it, but it doesn't even matter. I was there at the general plan, and this is not the, because I was reading, it said this is Artesian Water Right-of-Way and Land and Water Company in Alpine Springs, and that's not part of our project that we adopted for the general plan. And that's part of Metropolitan Water District and Kern County, and another water basin, which has to be, because you know, here, we have pure, pure water, almost purest water than anyone, anywhere. And when we start combining our systems, then we're going to degrade our water. And the whole reason that we were going to use our water is to help disadvantaged communities. Say Metropolitan is, we never, ever decided to get into a collaboration with them, which, however, there is a plan that would advantage Metropolitan. And this is, it's against well, the reclamation, and what you're going to do is our food source, because nature had cows, cows, happy cows, and that was because of the sediment in the ground. But nature had it, and that's why the gardens are supposed to have manure, and it can't happen, because it's going to degrade every single thing, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, with, since there are no other speakers, we stand adjourned till Monday, April 12th, 2010, at 5:30 PM in the Planning Large Conference Room here at City Hall. Thank you.